Good evening. I would like to call to your order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport New School Board for Tuesday, March 27th, 2018. On behalf of the members of the school board and our acting superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. School Board member Shelley Simons will arrive shortly. She's attending the business at the New Horizons Regional Educational Center Board. We welcome you here tonight, and as usual, we'll start with the invocation and the pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Cretton Middle School, Jordan Hill and Elvis Padilla Jr. So first, Jordan will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Elvis, who will come up and do the pledge. Jordan, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started this evening?
Hello, I'm Jordan Hill. I'm a seventh grader at Cretton Middle School. I love to help out with our school activities and just be involved and busy. It's just my thing. Today, I will be reading to you a poem called Lessons for Living. "I see you looking at your children, wondering what their lives will be. If you verify some answers, then the future you might see. Have you taught them to be truthful? Have you taught them to be kind? Have you given them the wisdom needed to be colored blind? Have you taught them to be caring for those handicaps some way? Do you read to them at bedtime? Have you taught them how to pray? Have you taken time to tell them what a miracle life is? Have to be aware of nature, share the beauty that it gives? Have you taught them how important it is to have respect for one another, to be grateful, not to be prideful when good fortune you discover? Do you let them know you love them in a way that leaves no doubt, so they know it's one thing they will never be without? We've liked to say we've done our best. Sometimes, that's very true. Can you say yes to all my questions? I will leave that up to you. I hope your answer is affirmative, for then I know you will see a future filled with happiness like it is supposed to be."
Jordan, that was wonderful, outstanding. So Elvis, would you please come forward?
My name is Elvis Padilla Jr. I'm an eighth grade student at Cretton Middle School. I'm in the symphonic band at Cretton and also the pet band which plays at every event that the Cretton Middle School has. My mother is one of the Spanish teachers at Cretton Middle School, and I love going to church and I love being with my friends and being happy. Now may everyone please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Elvis and Jordan. Both of you are phenomenal, and I know here today, supporting Jordan and Elvis tonight are their family members and their school family. Would they please stand to be recognized? The board appreciates your encouragement that you've given to these two young students. And again, thank you for bringing them out to our meetings this evening. Okay. We will move on to invocations to board recognitions.
Yes, and we have quite a few board recognitions tonight. Tonight, we'll be honoring some of our National Merit Scholars as well as our All-Virginia Music Students. And a first in quite some time, if ever, our High School League Outstanding Actor through the one-act play at Woodside. So honoring the arts and honoring academics, so you'll get to see just a cross section of how talented our students are. So Ms. Price, if you'll help us, I don't know, we'll move forward.
Good evening. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize 15 high-performing, talented students. During their junior year, more than 1.6 million 11th-grade students across the country took the 2017 Preliminary SAT and entered the National Merit Scholarship Program. This privately-financed competition program evaluates scores and recognizes high-performing students. Those with the highest PSAT scores in critical reading, mathematics, and writing qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Tonight, the school board and the acting superintendent recognize five Newport News students who've earned recognition. The students recognized this evening are among the highest scorers on the PSAT. Please join me in congratulating our 2018 National Merit Scholarship finalist, Zachary Ruin from Menchville High School. The national pool of National Merit finalists represents less than 1% of all high school seniors, and again includes the highest-scoring entrants in each state. To advance to finalist standing, Zachary was evaluated on his academic records, participation in school and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, honors and awards received, and his SAT scores. He will compete for a National Merit Scholarship and one of 5,000 corporate-sponsored or college-sponsored Merit Scholarship Awards, which will be announced beginning in April. National Merit Committed Students are in the top 2/3 of the approximately 50,000 highest scorers on the PSAT. Four Menchville students are named 2018 National Merit Committed Students. Please congratulate Camden Hunt, and Louis McAllister and Eliza Spencer, who went up. Oh, Louis, thank you, come on up. Congratulations. And Eliza Spencer was unable to join us this evening for a robotics event. National Merit Committed Students received letters of commendation and recognition of their outstanding academic promise. These National Merit Committed Students are candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporate and business partners of the National Merit Scholarship Program. Across the country, about 250,000 high school juniors also entered the National Hispanic Recognition Program through their participation in the PSAT. Nearly 5,000 of the highest-scoring students are recognized in the National Hispanic Recognition Program. The names of these honorees are sent to colleges and universities for admission consideration. This year, one Newport News student is recognized in this program, and that is Sophia Ramirez. Congratulations. Again, all of the students before you are listed among the highest scorers on the PSAT. Please join me congratulating all of our student honorees one more time. While they're making their way back to their seats, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize their family members, parents, and siblings that have joined us this evening. Would you please stand to be recognized? I would also like to thank their principal for joining us this evening, Bobby Suri. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Suri. Our next honorees are gifted musicians. They are among the best musicians in the state and have earned the All-Virginia Distinction. To reach this accomplishment, high school students must audition and earn a top chair or a place in a district event, which makes them eligible to audition for an All-Virginia Performance Ensemble. Newport News Public Schools is proud to recognize nine students tonight that have earned this honor. As I call their name, please come forward and receive recognition. Name to the All-Virginia Band, Alexandra Crop from Menchville High School, Nicholas Gonzalez from Menchville, and John Crop, who's unable to join us this evening. Name to the All-Virginia Guitar Ensemble from Menchville High School, Michael Keel. And also name to the All-Virginia Guitar Ensemble is Sam Cornet. He was unable to join us this evening. Name to the All-Virginia Chorus from Menchville High School is Charles Fitzgerald. From Warwick High School, Abigail Keats. From Woodside High School, Reagan Craze. And also from Woodside High School, Myra Jones, who I think is unable to join us this evening. So congratulations to all of our All-Virginia Ensemble honorees. I would also like to ask their family members, who are present and friends, to please stand and be recognized as well. Thank you. And we also have our high school principals here and some of their music teachers. Would you please stand and be acknowledged as well? A lot of talented students in Newport News. Our next honoree has earned recognition for his acting ability. This year's Virginia High School League Theater Festival Competition was held at Piedmont Community College in Charlottesville earlier this month. A Woodside High School Ensemble advanced to the one-act play state competition after earning top honors in the regional event. This marked the first time a Woodside Ensemble advanced to the state competition and earned a place. So congratulations to that entire team. During the festival, one student earned the highest possible individual state award in theater arts, and that is Connor Ware. Connor, would you please come forward? Connor earned an Outstanding Actor Award in the VHSL One-Ac Play Competition. He was selected by a panel of judges, including secondary and collegiate theater arts professionals from across the state for this performance. The months of planning and practicing certainly paid off. Connor, again, congratulations on earning Outstanding Actor, and we wish you much continued And would your family members please stand and be recognized? We know this is a whole-family effort, thank you. And I'd also like to acknowledge his principal, Jonathan Hockman, and his magnet director, Katie Sheehan Smith. Congratulations again to all of tonight's honorees. At this time, we'll take about an eight-minute break, so that our honorees and their families may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
Since winning the championship crown in 2012, Dozier's boys team has consistently been a force to be reckoned with by advancing to the tournament games five times in seven years. Washington's boys team won the tournament just two years ago when some of their current eighth graders were just starting their volleyball journey as sixth graders. This year, Dozier and Washington were both ranked number one after strong regular season performances. In the tournament final, the Dozier Dragons dominated early and won the first set. Dozier continued putting up points early in the second set, but Washington steadily gained on the Dragons, allowing the Bay Savers to force a third set. With the tie turned in their favor, Washington won this year's championship, their second title in three seasons. Longtime coach Brittany Patterson attributed her team's success to an experienced group of players who always worked hard and pulled together as a team. During all matches this season, families and staff cheered on their student athletes with great enthusiasm, while coaches and players exhibited positive sportsmanship on the court. Woodside High School students and staff are proving they're no dummies by pledging to buckle up every time they're in a car. Woodside is one of 32 high schools across Hampton Roads competing in the annual Get It Together Seatbelt Challenge presented by Drive Safe Hampton Roads. By increasing seatbelt usage and promoting safety education among teenagers, Woodside placed first in the annual competition three times, including the past two years. And this school year, Woodside Seatbelt Club organized a number of school-wide activities to encourage students, staff, and families to buckle up for safety. With help from club sponsors, lead physical education teacher Susan Reagan-Pimblett, and activities director Brandy Garganta, the Seatbelt Club spent their lunchtime encouraging classmates to sign a pledge to always wear their seatbelts. During an evening basketball game, parents and staff took the safety pledge, while the Seatbelt Club kept a watchful eye out for seatbelt usage in action. The club also does monthly parking lot checks as students, staff, and parent drop-offs arrive in the morning. With support from local State Farm agent Ann Sparkman, Woodside was proud to increase their schoolwide seatbelt usage to an amazing 98%. Crash test dummies Vince and Larry made sure to remind students to buckle up, while a wrecked car donated by Demby Body and Painting served as a very real illustration of the need for seatbelt use. Driver education classes made safety education fun by holding seatbelt relay competitions. And school resource officer Crawford taught criminal justice club members how to act smart if they're ever involved in a traffic stop. By giving the whole school an opportunity to get involved in seatbelt safety awareness, Woodside students certainly have something to cheer about.
Oh, okay. What happened to my dear? What happened to me? What happened to me?
Let's be the time to start again. Bring it to work.
Yeah. Oh, shit. Oh, stand behind. Okay, here we go. Welcome back, and I hope you enjoyed our school board spotlight. During our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and then toward the end of the meeting. Our board considers this an opportunity to listen to your concerns. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back to you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute limit. When you start your comments, the green light starts. Thirty seconds comes, there's a yellow light come on, and then the red light says to stop, so please wrap up your comments. As your name is called, please come forward. Cindy Connell.
Hi, my name is Cindy Connell. I teach third grade at Hilton Elementary, and I teach in the teacher preparation program at CNU. I just wanted to come out again and thank the board for their continued support for teacher raises and say that this is a profession I feel very strongly about, and I know many other people do, and I would love to see the board get behind a significant pay raise for teachers. I spoke last week, so I'm going to be super brief. I just wanted to say that out of seventeen regular classroom teachers at Hilton Elementary School, we have fourteen folks in the audience tonight from Hilton. So I don't know my math super well, but I'm thinking that's close to eighty, ninety percent, Mr. Nichols. So, thank you, Hilton. We're fabulous, and thank you, guys, for supporting teachers.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Gary B. Hunter, Chair for Newport News School Board. I am Dr. Crystal Taylor, former Newport News employee, now retired. I'm coming today to just give you some brief ideas for your next superintendent and your next new school board member in my district, which is the North District. As you are seeking to interview and to hire a dynamic superintendent for Newport News Public Schools, I am very concerned that you look in the areas of someone who has ideals and vision and morals for students in this school division. I also think that you should also think of the idea of race doesn't matter. And so if they are Caucasian, African-American, Japanese, Spanish, did I forget, I forget, Greek, race doesn't matter. Because in society, we are all mixed races. We are all mixed nationalities as it relates to languages. So, think about that as you search for the next dynamic superintendent of Newport News Public Schools. The last two things that I would like for you to think about as an idea is one that is supportive of the students and this community, that would lead the students to a successful life, whether it's college, whether it's career, or whether it's both. And so with that, you're going to need great teachers. So, as our Hilton family back there said, please look for someone who is very passionate, not just for students, but for teachers. And lastly, for a school board member, I'm going to be brief, that person needs to support the superintendent. Thank you.
Heather Westheimer.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Please excuse any nerves I have. I'm used to speaking to seven and eight-year-old groups of people, not adults, and this is a bit daunting. I have had the desire to work with children since I was a child myself. I've been working at child watches, youth lobbies, babysitting, ever since I was very young. So I'm very pleased to be an educator, or as Mr. Ashby says, an educator. As many of our educators know, this is not a nine-to-five job. It comes with countless overtime. Report cards in and of themselves are daunting tasks. I want to bring to your attention an article that came from NPR called "Look at the Numbers." This was published on March 16th, 2018, so just a few days ago. They took 2016 salaries of each, excuse me, salaries of teachers in each state and adjusted it for cost of living. Virginia was ranked 36, with a mere several hundred dollars below Oklahoma and West Virginia. Virginia's average salary was $52,000 a year. I can't speak for my peers, but I've been in the system ten years, and with a master's degree, I'm nowhere near that. I, I do believe that teachers in this district are very proud to work here. I consider Newport News Public Schools very progressive in the way we teach mathematics, literacy. I consider this an up-and-coming district. I often give advice to people who are teaching in neighboring schools, school divisions. But I want us to apply the same proactive nature and urgency that we are giving our students to our staff as well. In the classroom, the education equation comes down to, in my opinion, students and teachers. We appreciate the support in considering a four-to-five percent raise for educators, and I hope that you all continue to support us in that. Thank you. Hi, my name is Joan Hurscorn, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Warwick High School PTSA. We want to thank Mr. Nichols and Susan Tilly for meeting with our board this past fall. Also, we'd like to thank each of the school board members who have listened, read emails, and responded to our concerns for the safety of our faculty, staff, and students of Warwick High School. We appreciate you recognizing the unique security obstacles Warwick faces with its outdated design, which creates poor sightlines, and its open campus configuration and growing student body. Mr. Nichols, thank you for responding to our most recent emails in such a timely manner and ensuring us our budget request for additional security is, in fact, included in the budget. It is our hope that this line item will stay in place and be part of the budget that is passed this evening. The safety of our faculty, staff, and students at Warwick High School and all the Newport News Public Schools is our utmost concern. Thank you.
I'm going to change the tone here a little bit. My comments may be a day late and a dollar short, as they say, but I'm concerned about the future of what I call Huntington High School. I am a graduate of Huntington High School. My father was a graduate of Huntington High School. All my aunts and aunts were graduates of Huntington High School. Huntington High School was an institution when I was coming along. It helped bring the southeast community together. We were a people proud of the institution, an institution that we don't value anymore. Huntington was a legacy and an institution for black students in that area. It's gone. The community is gone. I don't have, I know that the decisions have been made, but I just want to bring forth to the school, to the school board, the importance of remembering the legacy of Huntington High School, so it not be forgotten for future generations. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent. I wish to speak to the proposal for the transfer of the students from Huntington and the budget. And my first question is, what provisions are there in this budget for Huntington Middle What is about to happen with this budget and with the proposed removal of our students is that there's not going to be a Huntington Middle School. What we're doing here is not about us. It's about our children. Let us stop acting like this is our thing. It's not. Huntington's future is riding on whether or not we can be decisive. It's not about us, so my proposal is that you, Mr. Superintendent, go to City Hall tomorrow morning and tell them, I didn't say ask, tell them that you need the money to start on Huntington this summer. Because every time we go before them, they say, "There's been no requests, so we haven't done anything." Okay? Let's call their bluff. Our students are about to be transferred to Heinz, our uprising sixth graders are going to Heinz and Crittenden. So that tells me that within two years, if we're not doing something, there's not going to be a Huntington Middle School. Because the sixth graders, my understanding is they're not going to move over to Heritage. I don't know. That might be the proposal. But if we do that, then there's not going to be a Huntington Middle School. It's going to be sitting there, closed, idle, further falling down, and what are we going to have? Nothing. I beg of you all to let's get this done. Let's stop, you know, batting, playing tennis, batting it back and forth. Let's just get this job done. Let's decide on what we're going to do with the school. Let's decide on what we're going to do with the students. Let's stop playing with the future, our children's lives. Let's get it done, because, as I said, we're here on behalf of the children. It's not about us. So, I say, now, tomorrow, we're not talking two and three years from now. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Voss.
Don't worry, I'll be brief this time. Hello, I'm here with other Newport News Public Schools teachers tonight. We're wearing red in support of Mr. Brown's proposal for new funding from city council for a four percent raise for NNPS teachers and staff, and I hear that the school board may vote, vote tonight on the proposal. I want to again thank the school board for having teachers' backs last spring when you asked city council for new funding for a three percent raise on our behalf, and now I ask you to please vote in support of this four percent raise proposal. I know that city council has not always been supportive of the school board in the past, but there are a lot of teachers, staff, and community members now paying attention to this issue, as you see tonight, and I think that the crowd that fills this room tonight is just a glimpse of the crowd that city council will see at their budget public hearings. Better pay for teachers and staff would allow NNPS to draw the best teachers and staff that our area has to offer. It would be a great investment in our students and would help to address the teacher shortage. Thank you in advance for voting in support of Mr. Brown's proposal for a four percent raise for our teachers and staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, school board members, thank you again for hearing me and hearing us. This is the third time I think I've come before you. I'm coming from Richmond, Virginia, because the Huntington Middle School is very important to me as a member of the Newport News East End community. And, and I think we had asked you to do everything possible to try to build around the students who would be there, to make sure that Huntington didn't close, because we all are fearful that if you take the students out, that you will close the school. And we've asked you not to do that for the benefit of the community. As been said, Huntington is, is a vital part of that East End community. Huntington is the center. It's the center. Many of us go to different churches, synagogues, or mosques, but we all went to one school in East End, and that was Huntington. And it was so important that, it molded us, shaped us, and when you talk about the crime today, much of the crime comes from the lack of role models that are in the community. And Huntington provided that, that kind of model for children to emulate, and I'm a product of that. I mean, I don't know where I would have gone if it had not been for a school in the community where the teachers took me as their child. This fight is still going on. In nineteen and twelve, when lawyer Newsom and group wanted to start a high school, and it was started in 1919, and now we are still fighting the battle to make sure there is still a school presence in our community. It's very important, and we, we hope that we have let you know in no uncertain terms that how important it is for you to make sure that Huntington is there. Many of you know this book that Craig Cridle wrote, professor from South Carolina University, or University of South Carolina, and I think he says it best in his book, where he says, "Huntington High School was a community-centered school. The success of the high school was due largely to the strong bond between school and community." Professor Palmer strengthened these ties, and we are here today to say, "Let's keep these bonds alive," and, and we beg you to make Huntington a middle, keep it a middle school. We don't want anything else there except Huntington Middle School because our kids need it. Thank you so much.
I would like to introduce myself. I am Rhonda Wagner, and I am the newly incoming elected president for the Newport News Education Association. One of my many goals going forward is to commit to an ongoing open dialogue with you, the school board. Additionally, myself and my members do support the four percent raise. I also have one additional request. We would like to know who the names are of the current applicants for superintendent. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Nancy Williams.
I want to say peace and blessings to everyone on the board. My name is Nancy Williams, born and raised in New Jersey. I have no children here in Newport News or Hampton, but I am a business owner here in Hampton, and I was concerned about, I am concerned about Huntington because community makes a difference. My eighth-grade teacher took me in as an abused child, so I know what it is to be founded in a community. And that school, the kids, the children, could go to the other side of the school that has already been repaired or somewhat, and they could stay in their community. When you take a child out of their home and put them somewhere else temporarily, that changes their attitude, that changes who they are. So I, I'm, I'm here to say, keep the kid, the children where they belong, is in their home school, and as they do hospitals. They don't take the patients out of the hospital. As they repair and rebuild, they leave them there, and they make provisions for those patients. So I ask you all to make that decision for Huntington, that the children stay in their community, because it's very important.
Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Well, thank you, and we hear your concerns, and we will take them under consideration. I will move on with the agenda, the consent agenda. Item 3.01, the minutes from a special meeting at work session, February 13th. Item 3.02, minutes from our regular session, February 20th, 2018. 3.03, financial reports, revenue, expenses, February 2018, and child nutrition services, February 2018. 3.04, personnel report, and 3.05, resolution, 18-05, appointment of hearing officers. Do we have a, do we have a, you heard the approval, and you heard the second? It's time for the question. There being none? Ms. Hinton, please call a row.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
And Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. I will move on with the agenda. Item number four, action items. 4.01, personnel actions?
No personnel actions.
We have no actions. We'll move on to item 4.02, proposed 2018, 2019 school calendar. We did hear that our, the latest calendar proposed. I think we do need a motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have a motion for approval of the calendar for the coming year?
So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. A time for question. There being none? Ms. Hinton, please call a row.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
And Ms. Ashby?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Big item number 4.03, proposed fiscal year 2019 operation budget. Mr. Nichols, give us an update.
Absolutely. So we'll provide an update for you at this time. As you know, we've had several opportunities to interact with the public about our budget, and the reason we do that is so that we can make modifications as we go throughout. So what I want to show you is the superintendent's proposed budget, which is what you heard a couple weeks ago, with the, tonight's school board's proposed budget. So, starting at the top, the city revenue increase in the superintendent's proposed budget was going to be $700,000. In order to accomplish the four percent raise, we would need to request $3 million more dollars from the city, so it would be a $3.7 million increase. So that gets us from the two percent to the four percent. Each percent in Newport News is $2 million, so part of the work we did over the past week was to find a million dollars in our budget. So here's how we're doing it. We initially planned on replacing our phone system in the superintendent's proposed budget over one year. Instead, we'll do that over two years, saving us a million dollars. We can still accomplish that, but that allows us to take that million dollars and put it towards salary. We're also still waiting on a final state budget. If we were to see increased revenue from the state, which is somewhat unlikely, we would also apply that to the salary piece as well. So what you have on your right is the superintendent's proposed budget, but tonight I bring you the school board's proposed budget, with a lot of input from the school board and the community as far as what the budget could be.
So the budgets of, so the budgets before you, is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion to approve, you heard the second. Colton has to read, our vice chairman has to, to read a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion for the budget to adopt the fiscal year 2019 proposed operating budget in the amount of $306,600, $306,600,000. The 2018, 2019 workers' compensation fund budget of $2,327,630. The textbook fund budget- The dedication, the devotion, the hard work, because you can call it either hard work or hard work, but it's the hard work that our teachers, our educators do. And again, this school board really supports the instructional staff and what they do each and every single day, which is demonstrated in this proposed budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
It's taken many months to get to this point, a lot of hard work, and so I do not want to delay the vote any further.
Ms. Hinton, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
And Ms. Ashby?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Mr. Brown, that all was for you, and our teachers, and support staff, and bus drivers, and all those else who we're helping out there. We're going to move the agenda to item 4.04, proposed 2018-2019 rezoning plan for Huntington Middle School.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we postpone this until the city produces their budget. I think this may be prematurely, because we're not talking about equipment, we're not talking about products, we're talking about moving kids. I know there's probably been some decisions already made, but I think we can at least wait until we see their budget. Maybe it's a possibility they may give us funding to do what we need for Huntington. Therefore, I think this is premature. So if the motion doesn't carry, I understand, but I would like to make that motion that we postpone voting on this at this time.
Second?
Well, you heard the motion, you heard the second? Time for the question.
What does this mean for timeline for students?
Well, that's something that we still can look at, but the bottom line is, they haven't proposed a budget yet at the city. So even if we wait, I think they introduce theirs next Thursday or next Tuesday, probably. So that still gives us time. Once you put a plan in place, all it takes is execution. So I'm only asking for their first meeting to see what they plan on doing with Huntington or supporting us in that effort.
Mr. Nichols?
Just point of clarification on the city's budget. The city's going to do their operating budget, and I'm sort of looking to Mary Lou for a little bit.
The next capital budget won't happen until November.
Yes, the capital budget process won't be until November, so we won't know until November what they plan to fund for Huntington. So tonight is the operating budget. In our operating budget, you won't see the Huntington piece, and in their operating budget, you wouldn't see it. It's in the capital budget where that would happen, and that would happen sometime in November, timeline-wise.
Right, and this could be what you call a lesson learned. You know, we knew this was coming up, we knew their timeline, we knew our timeline. This is something we should have proposed last year, okay? We should have put this on their doorstep last year, as far as executing their plan on moving children. At the end of the day, we're moving children, we're not moving products. We're not moving buses or equipment, okay? And I understand if the motion does not carry, but I just want to be on the record stating that.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate Mr. Harris's, I appreciate Mr. Harris's point, and, but there is no situation right now where the city can act in time to preserve the quality of that building for next school year and the school year after. In fact, it would take several years, three, maybe four, maybe five years to get a project designed, under construction, and built. And the reason this is before us at this point is because of the concern of the quality of the environment in that building. And my fear, and I feel like we have to express it, is if we fail to act to rezone the students, we're subjecting them to, you know, unacceptable hazards in terms of mold, in terms of other environmental hazards. I know this is an inconvenient situation, and, but, you know, I think we have to act in a prudent way to make sure that we don't have kids that are going to be exposed to unacceptable hazards while the wheels move and while we get another Huntington Middle School on that site. I think postponing, at this point, runs the risk that we'll simply be back here at this time next year with the same question and no further solutions, and subject our students to the kind of hazards that have brought us to this moment right now.
Well, I just have two comments. Once again, we need to go on record that this school system has been preactive and proactive in reference to requesting funding and monies for Huntington since 2010. We've been consistent and constant with that. Secondly, and maybe even more importantly, we must think about the safety and security and the well-being of our children. Yes, we're in this situation at this time, but the safety, the well-being, the health of our children, to put them back in that situation, me personally, me being an advocate for children, I cannot support that. Okay? We have, we have to do what's best at this time for children, but to have the children go back to, as Mr. Starchill has, as he has described, the present conditions of Huntington, no. I, I respect and love the children so very much that I would not put them in that situation. I just would not put them in that situation. And research clearly, clearly tells us, the setting of a building has a whole lot to do with the instruction of growth and learning of children. That, that is fact in that situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I guess, I guess that I, you know, since I was elected two years ago, I've heard two sides of two different stories. I hear some members say that the, two-thirds of the school is not being used, that maybe we can get Monday start refurbishments, we can move the kids to another floor and still execute. So for me, and the reason I made the motion, because I've heard many different stories, even from my colleagues. So, and I think, you know, we set the record straight, if the building is inhaleable, if it is rundown, if it is unsafe, I think we did a Mosley study, we sent the superintendent out to come back with a, with a resolution, okay? And I think the only thing they came back with was, well, it's going to cost X amount of dollars to redo a school. And now, if there was anything in there that's clearly stated that it was unsafe, or whatever the case may be, then I understand that. But I've heard two or three different stories, okay? So I just want to make sure we as a board are speaking on one accord, okay? Not, if it's unsafe, sure, no one wants their kids in a unsafe building, I understand that, okay? But that's not what the public is hearing, okay? I haven't heard not one parent, not one parent have emailed me, contacted me, threw rocks at me, and said, I want my child out of Huntington. Now, if you're out there, I think it's what, excess of 400-plus kids? Here we are. Not one parent, I think one lady, parent came here last, last week, if I'm not mistaken. That's the first one I've heard. So I just want to make sure that, and this is for Marvin Harris, my conscience, okay, that we're not prematurely moving based off of actions or non-actions of the city. Why? Because this their ultimate objective anyway, was to choke the school off of funds, thus moving the kids out, thus recreating, rezoning the whole school district, which is in your district. You should be, I mean, if anything, maybe we should put trailers on the site, we got trailers elsewhere to educate kids. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, everybody know, everybody know, let's speak truth to where truth is. Once those kids leave, we're not going to get the funding, Jeff. We're not going to get it. It's going, it's going to take two, three years, design for a year, 18 months for us construction. The bottom line, once those kids leave that site, there will probably be no more Huntington. So I just want to make sure we as a board express that, if that's what we feel. You don't believe that the city's going to give us the money, you know that. So let's put trailers on it, or at least put trailers on the site to let the city know, guess what? We don't plan on moving, so either you go give us the money, or we'll brick in trailers, or whatever the case may be. I mean, that is my motion, you know, you guys know how to have to accept it, it's on the floor, you can vote it down, or whatever the case may be.
Well, you heard the motion, I think there was a second, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, point of question, is the proposal to delay, to delay until April, or is the proposal to delay, to delay for this entire year?
I think it's to vote, isn't the proposal to vote?
No, it was just to delay, but there was no time to delay to...
To delay until November.
So you would move, we would move the kids in November?
No, I would say, we keep the, we would make the motion to keep the kids there all year long. Let's find the funds to put trailers there, or let's find out, get a study, if the building, if the building is unsafe, if the building is unsafe, then it's unsafe.
I'm sorry, but I don't feel that our kids deserve to be in trailers, that's just not satisfactory. Our kids, our kids deserve the best. We have a teacher right there in the back, and she said, Mr. Ely, we need to get out of that building. I'm on the school board, I visit my schools, I talk to teachers, I talk to kids, I talk to principals. And when they say, Mr. Ely, we need to be out of this building, it's cold. Mr. Ely, we need to be out of this building, it's bug-infested, I'm going to keep it real. Our children deserve the best, and if the best is moving to a better environment, our children deserve that. I would not, under any circumstance, go to say our children belong in trailers. Not, I don't agree with that.
Well, that's understandable, that's right. It's up, it's up to the board to vote on it, or I would like for the board to vote on it, which is understandable. I just made a motion, majority rules, I just want to go on the record to say whether we did all we could do, or whatever the case may be. If it's, if it's unsafe, then there are, there are engineering studies that can say, guess what? It is unsafe to have any human inside of this building.
So you talked, so we heard the question, so now we had a motion, did we ever have a second?
Yes.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
So we had a motion, we heard the question, so it's call the roll. This is for, to delay the movement of the children in Huntington until November 2018? Is that correct?
Actually, Mr. Hunter, I think the motion was to postpone the vote on this.
Correct.
Oh, postpone the vote?
Yes.
Okay. It's postponed the vote until, was there any deadline, or just postpone the vote for the day?
I mean, the board, I mean, the board and the chairman, I mean, the chairman, within his rights or rubbery's orders, still can bring it up for vote on the next meeting, and if there's a motion or a, a, a motion to postpone it again, it could be voted down, yes, up or down. So I just want to, you know, make that motion, that's all.
So I'm going to have a question for the superintendent.
Thank you.
With the motion of the board to postpone this till our next meeting, how does that affect our budget that we've just approved? And how does that affect the parents and the students who are preparing to, for the rezoning of our students to these different places?
It has pretty significant impacts in all of those areas. Right now, you have about a $1.7 million savings in the move. Some of that is due to staffing, others, parts of it are due to facilities and maintenance. Mr. Harris referenced the Mosley study. The Mosley study, and the study says that it has $20 million worth of immediate needs in the school. So if we were to postpone this by a meeting, we would highly unlikely be able to move kids this school year. My worry with that is, we're one HVAC malfunction from doing the move whether we want to or not, because we won't be able to heat or cool. So this is the point, we are with it, we know what the Mosley study says, and it does have budget implications as well.
How much is it to fix the HVAC system?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's about $11 million to fix the HVAC, and then another $9 million in the roofing piece, which gets you to $20 million. That's the immediate needs.
And how much did it do in your school?
So we're going to go ahead and, can we go ahead and call the vote? So call the roll, Mr. Hinton.
Okay, board members, you're voting on...
We're voting on postponing, we're voting on postponing this particular vote until next meeting. But as you heard, we have already, we've already voted on a budget that actually affects anything that we do from there on, so we have to keep that in mind as well.
Is everybody clear before roll call, what you're voting on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Brown?
Against.
Mr. Ely?
Against.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Ms. Simons?
Against.
Mr. Starchill?
Against.
And Mr. Ashby?
Against.
The motion fails six one, six against and one in favor.
Okay. So now we're back to item 4.04, for the proposed rezoning plan for Huntington Middle Schools as documented at our latest meeting. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move approval.
Second?
You heard the move, motion, you heard the second? Time for the question. There being none? Ms. Hinton, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
And Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Motion carries six in favor, one against.
Okay. So we're going to move on to reports and information. Our next item is item 5.01, proposed cell tower lease extension at Denby High School. And Mr. Nichols, do you have some information on that?
I absolutely do, and it's pretty straightforward, but I wanted to let you know that this agenda item is for a cell tower lease that was first approved at the site in 2008, so it's an existing cell tower lease. Rentals for this site is currently $57,000. The current lease extends for 15 more years. The cell tower management company has requested to extend that for another 25 years. So the lease agreement would run till 2058. So I'm not sure how many of us will be here for the expiration of that lease on the board, but from 2058. So the agenda item before you is to extend that lease that exists at Denby High School.
Okay.
And it'll come before you, next one.
Okay. And then we'll move on to item 5.02, special addition, a special education annual funding plan. I think we'll have Dr. Mitchell come forward, is that correct?
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Ashby, Mr. Nichols, and board members. This is the time of year that I come before you to present our proposal for spending funds allocated to us for special education services through a federal grant. While the total special education budget is approximately $50 million, in which some of it was included in the overall budget that you approved tonight. Tonight, the main focus is on the roughly $6 million awarded to us based on the number of students who are receiving special education services on December 1st. That's how the calculation is done. So as you can see, we currently provide services for students with disabilities in 12 different categories, and we presently support 3,600 students. And if you look at the chart, you'll see that there's a wide range in terms of the numbers of students in each disability category. Working in collaboration with other departments, our goals for the department include the following, not limited to just these, but they do include the following: to close the achievement gap, to really look at our departmental resources and maximize those resources. So what we have done...
Uh, the cell tower management company has, uh, requested to extend that for another 25 years. So, the, uh, lease agreement would run till 2058. So, I'm not sure how many of us will be here for the expiration of that lease on the board, but from, uh, 2058. So, the, um, agenda item before you is, is to extend that lease, uh, that exists at Demby High School.
Okay.
And it'll come before you, uh, next one.
Okay. And then we'll move on to, um, item 5.02, special addition, a special education annual funding plan. Uh, I think we'll have Dr. Mitchell come forward, is that correct?
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Ashby, Mr. Nichols, and board members. This is the time of year that I come before you to present our proposal for spending funds allocated to us for special education services through a federal grant. While the total special education budget is approximately 50 million, in which some of it was included in the overall budget that you approved tonight. Tonight, the main focus is on the roughly $6 million awarded to us based on the number of students who are receiving special education services on December 1st. That's how the calculation is done. So, as you can see, we currently provide services for students with disabilities in 12 different categories, and we presently support 3,600 students. And if you, uh, look at the chart, you'll see that there's a wide range in terms of the numbers of students in each disability category. Working in collaboration with other departments, our goals for the department include the following, not limited to just these, but they do include, include the following, to close the achievement gap, to really look at our departmental resources and maximize those resources. So, what we have done is we've looked at positions and reallocated them in different ways. For example, we had a special education supervisor who worked on instruction and compliance, and now her sole job is really focusing on instruction, to help move our students. Uh, another goal is to, to extend the existing successful programs. So, we took a look at programs that were successful for us, and we extended those programs. Another goal is to continue to build employee expertise, not only our teachers, but our administrators and other staff that interface with our students with disabilities, as well as with their parents. And the last goal is to assist our students with disabilities in graduating with their highest achievable diploma status. And I'm really pleased to be able to say to you that we are in the top third in the state of Virginia for graduating students with disabilities with advanced and standard diplomas. We're in the top third. And of course, our goal is to be number one, so we're moving in the right direction. So, let's take a look at the, the funds that are provided in this grant. So, we are, we are proposing to continue to use the funds primarily for personnel, which does include instructional personnel, a parent resource coordinator that works closely with our parents, and extended school year services, as well as other positions. So, if you take a look at the next slide, these are the positions that we have supported in the past by the grant, and they have truly provided an invaluable support and resources to our students. So, it is a total of 125 positions that we are proposing, that we sup, continue to support through this grant. And as you take a look at it, it's a variety, um, in educational interpreters, uh, special education instructional assistants, some lead teachers, the parent, uh, resource coordinator that I mentioned before, that works with parents, some secretaries, some special education teachers, and a social worker. Obviously, we have more positions than those, but these are the positions that this particular grant can fund. So, our next steps would be coming back, you would, you would be asked to, uh, approve this at the April 17th meeting, and then we would have to submit it to the Virginia Department of Education no later than May 11th. So, that does conclude my brief presentation, but I am certainly happy to answer any questions regarding this proposal.
Thank you very much for all the work you do.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I remember, um, last year, it seems like we had some gaps with, um, how our special education students were doing in, um, the area of reading. Do you have any update for us on how things are going?
Yes, I do. Well, I will say to you, you are right, we, we did have some gaps, we continue to have some, but because last, two years ago, we implemented some very specialized reading programs in third through fifth, in some pilot schools, we saw an increase in our reading scores, not only on the SOLs for those students, but also on our benchmarks. So, then we added additional schools, and this year, what we have done, um, that was three through five, so this year, we have implemented some very specialized reading programs for K through two, because we know if we can start them earlier, it's not gonna be as much of a challenge. So, as I mentioned about the graduation, we get it on the other end, so we recognize we've gotta start that much earlier with the specialized reading. Uh, we also have far more students who are accessing the general curriculum. So, even though I might have a reading disability, I'm still in a general ed class, getting the content from a general ed teacher with the specialized reading support from a special educator. So, we're seeing some growth in that area, and we're really excited about it.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Mitchell, can you, um, share that statistic with us again, in reference to the graduation? I just, you know, I'm in my 60s, so I've maybe not heard it that well. Can you share that again?
Yes, for, in the state of Virginia, Newport News Public Schools is, um, in the top third in the state for graduating students with disabilities with an advanced diploma and a standard.
Oh, I think that deserves another round of applause.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Dr. Mitchell. I mean, it is obvious that, uh, once you saw the program at, at one level, you had to go back and make, uh, leadership decisions, or, or leadership changes, or whatever the case may be, uh, whether it's reallocation of funds, or, or moving personnel around. Um, how would you characterize, uh, that type of leadership model? Uh, because I'm one of those individuals that if you are successful in one place, and that, there's a model that can be emulated, uh, and then we execute it. So, could you just elaborate on, on, on your leadership philosophy?
On my philosophy, absolutely. Well, I, I, and I don't know that it has a name.
Yeah, right.
But I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I did.
Yeah.
I sat with some principals, some executive directors that aren't in special education, my supervisors, some supervisors in curriculum and instruction, and said, "What do we need to do? Let's peel back the layers." So, I asked people to come to the table who typically aren't at the table for special education. Usually, it's just the special education. I asked other people to come to the table to say, "Let's peel back the layers, let's look at our data, what, what is it that we're missing? If we can help our kids on the upper end, why can't we do it here?" And so, some of the recommendations were, "Let's take a look at your positions, and how can we reallocate those positions? Let's take, for example, we actually took a secretary position and upgraded to it, upgraded it to an instructional specialist position." And that person solely works with teachers who teach students with disabilities in the middle school. So, to really kind of take other people's ideas, and not, to be quite honest, think that you are in charge of everything, and that you know everything, to, to step back and say, "Other people have something to offer, let me find out what that is." Also, I looked at some other districts to see, you know, what are they doing, what positions do they have that are making a difference?
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I just want to say congratulations again for being number three in the whole state of Virginia, that's just amazing.
Top three.
Okay. All right. Uh, next up, um, 5.03, Smart Beginnings Kindergarten Readiness, and then we'll have, uh, Ms. Beverly Becker, and Carmen Curic, and Tracy Snyder, is that correct? Please come forward.
We're gonna be passing out a document to you that we're gonna be talking about.
And this is a joint presentation, uh, and they'll get into it quite a bit. We also have Bruce Myers, who's the executive director from Smart Beginnings, uh, here with us today as well. So, it's a combination...
Thank you.
Presentation of Smart Beginnings and Newport News Public Schools, and our partnership, so that's why you see everyone at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the school board, thank you for allowing us to speak with you tonight about Smart Beginnings and our kindergarten readiness document that was developed by both Newport News and Hampton School Systems. Um, first, I would like to begin by introducing myself, I'm Tracy Snyder, I'm the development director for Smart Beginnings, and, um, we are a partnership among, uh, public and private businesses and individuals serving the cities of Hampton and Newport News. The partnership works to enhance the quality of early childhood health and learning for young children, so they are well-prepared to enter school and one day, the workforce. Our goal is for all Peninsula children to be prepared socially, emotionally, physically, and intellectually to succeed in kindergarten and beyond. Ready children live in nurturing families, have high-quality early education and health services, and are supported by enriching and caring communities. The first five years are a critical window in a child's life, when their brain becomes wired, and their early experiences have direct dramatic impact on what kind of learners and what kind of people they will become. The brain has the most capability of change during this time, which means it's a period of both great opportunity and vulnerability. It is easier and less costly to form strong brain circuits during the early years than it is to intervene or to fix them later. Early childhood experiences affect the development of the brain architecture, which provide the foundation for all future learning, behavior, and health. At the time when brain development is at its highest, our investment is at its lowest. As you can see on this chart, our state and federal dollars, the red line, are at a zero or slightly above during the same period where the brain growth, the blue, the blue line, is sharply inclining. When the brain growth levels off, the public funding finally comes into play. Right as, uh, just as the brain reaches 100%, the funding finally catches up with it. Research is clear that a child's development begins from conception, and that experiences they encounter play a major role in their social, emotional, and cognitive growth. We commend this school board and the school administration for recognizing the critical role early childhood experiences play in the future success of our children. And at this time, I'd like to, uh, to introduce Carmen Curic, she is with the Newport News Public Schools, she is a preschool, I mean, a pre-K and first grade instructional supervisor.
Good evening. Um, according to a report released in 2000, in December 2017, from the joint, Virginia's Joint Legislative and Audit Review Commission, um, about one-third of Virginia's kindergartners enter kindergarten without the academic and non-academic skills necessary for succeeding in elementary school. Currently, Newport News serves 1,350 students in our First Step Program, and currently enrolled in kindergarten, we have 2,181 students. So, you can see there are a great deal of families who don't have access maybe to the resources that they need to help their children be ready for kindergarten. Um, Newport News is also piloting the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program with the University of Virginia, with a lot, along with 50% of all of the school divisions in Virginia. Um, this Virginia kindergarten readiness program assesses math and social and emotional skills, um, in our five-year-olds, and it complements our PALS assessment that assesses literacy. So, you can see the awareness for being kindergarten-ready is growing greatly across our state, and I think it's a great time for us to help our families, help their children be ready for kindergarten. And Beverly Becker is going to kind of take you through the tool that we hope to do that with.
Well, we want to thank you for having us here this evening. We believe that this is a message that our community has been hungry for, for a very long time, and I'm so thankful that Newport News and Hampton City Schools decided to develop this in conjunction, because I feel as if that creates a very strong message to our community about what readiness truly is. So, let me take you through this document that we worked over a year in developing. It seems very simple, but I am sure that that is not exactly the case. First of all, it was thoughtfully crafted. I have to tell you that when we sat around the table, we had many, many, many years of educational experience at that table, and I was astounded at how difficult it was to determine what readiness actually was. And how can we, as a community, determine our steps in securing this population from zero to five if we do not have a ready definition of a ready child? Um, so, this was very thoughtfully crafted. Um, the intentional design, I want to draw your attention to, you'll notice at the very top on the front, which is where it says, "My three-to-five-year-old can." We want you to know that children develop over time and at their own pace, and we celebrate that for families. Many times, as young parents, as myself, we're like, "What is your child doing? What's your child doing?" And, "Oh, my child's not doing that," and it creates this panic that is just not needed. But we certainly want to support families in knowing that it develops over time, and that's why we were very specific in the wording at the top of the document. The next thing I'd like you to draw your attention to is the order in which you see the standards that we have placed, that we want families to pay close attention to, and our community to pay attention to, social emotional skills. Children need social emotional skills in order to know how to approach the classroom. They need to be able to share, they need to be able to problem solve, they need to be able to say, "I'm angry." 'Cause guess what? We all get angry, right? And they're gonna get angry in school, and we need them to be able to say, "You know what? I'm really angry right now, and I'm gonna need you to help me fix this." And that's okay, we celebrate that for children, so those social emotional skills, those are number one. The oral language and the fine and gross motor skills, those are incredibly important for families to realize. Basically, what we're trying to say is, we want children to become ready to learn in the classroom, that they are creating a foundation to when they enter those doors, if they know their ABCs and one, two, threes, but they can't hold a pencil, or they can't use scissors, or use those tools of the, of the classroom, it's really all for nothing. So, we really want to make sure we're, we're communicating what's important, um, for our children to come ready for school. Um, on the backside, you'll notice the blue side is community resources. We know that there are children in our community who will need to seek further support in their educational experience and in their development, and we want to be the support for them, and to get them to the intervention services that they may need. And so, you'll notice a lot of just simple, helpful websites, um, your information is on the back as well as our information, in order for families to feel supported and to know where to turn when they have, they have questions. Um, I just want to thank you so much for partnering with us in this. Um, the Week of the Young Child is, Thursday is April 19th, but that is, um, the Thursday of the Week of the Young Child, and we've chosen this date specifically to kick off this document. We are hoping that the community will stand with us, and they will go side by side with their neighbors, with the people at their churches, with the people within their communities that they bump into, that they will use this document in businesses around our community to start to, start the conversation about the importance of readiness, getting children ready for school, and then also, um, what do you do? How do you get your kid ready? What are the things that you need? So, please join us, April 19th, everyone here is invited, if you're able to come, teachers, I know you're teaching, uh, but we, we certainly want a, a large community support. If you know, um, business people from your agencies that you all work for, I know you all have jobs out in the community, please, please make this a, a priority to bring them along that morning. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Simons.
So, um, is this going to be produced in Spanish, in Espana?
Great question.
And where will it be, um, given to the community?
Sure, absolutely. So, that's part of the community celebration, is we are going to have commitment cards for people who come to decide how it would best fit within their agency, and to pick up their, um, cards at that time. We are gonna be working on getting, um, it translated. I do know there's quite a few different languages specifically that have been moving into our areas, and we want to be as inclusive of that as possible, um, so it is something we are prioritizing. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Oh, one, uh, fantastic to see, uh, over 2,000 students enrolled in kindergarten, uh, great, uh, looking forward to our future graduating classes, uh, and having a, a nice large class. Um, I'm a data guy, so I always focus in on whenever I see a gap, and so I'm interested. Um, it looks that there are about 800 students not served, um, uh, by the First Step Program. Uh, and you happen to know, those 800 students, are they all in private preschool, uh, or are they being served, uh, in, in some other program?
I'd also like to draw your attention to, that's the four-year-old population, what about this zero-to-three population? We don't know. Uh, it, it, I, specifically my role, I'm the early education resource coordinator with Smart Beginnings, and that is one of the systems that we are looking to change within our community. We do have childcare providers in preschools who stepped up to say, "I'm a childcare provider," but we have a lot of children who, they can't afford childcare, so, um, the families are putting them in situations where they're quote-unquote underground. Um, and the issue with that is, when we go to, to work alongside you all, to determine what measures do we need to put in place in these early years to help childcare providers and get children ready, it's really difficult when we don't have that set of population that's kind of missing. So, that's something that is mulling around in our head, and, and we're hoping that you'll partner with us to, to develop, um, relationships so that we can get to the bottom of it.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Harris.
Well, first, I think it's a, a great idea. Yeah, it really is, it, it reminded me of when I was a private in the Army in 1984, uh, they gave me a SMART book, and said, "Everything you need to know is inside of this book," right? And it actually helped me out because it was step-by-step. You know, I could see this in the hand of a, a, a young family, uh, that may not have their kid in, uh, uh, First Step Program or enrolled in kindergarten, but it's one of those things, at home, you know, they can take the check list and, and start to practice this. I really, I think this, this, this is wonderful.
So, you're gonna use it with families that you know?
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I'm sure it's electronic, I mean, is it...
We do have it up on our website currently, correct, Tracy? Am I, am I speaking incorrectly? I'm on the record.
Okay.
Um, yes, we do have it up on our website currently.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Statchill.
So, I'd, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight and for what you're doing. And, you know, any of us who are involved in this drama of raising, you know, the next generation, um, you know, I, I, I started looking at your list, and I remember what it was like when, you know, my daughter was in three to five, and, um, there were a lot of parents, you know, and I just, I was guilty of this, who, um, would probably want to see solving quadratic equations.
Alice could've done that. Alice could have done that.
Or, you know, you know, just, our expectations for our kids are sort of all the way up here. But the really important things I found were at the top, play well with other children. Now, that is something that really do need to develop early on. And so there are a lot of really soft skills that are actually very complex, socialization pieces. And I'd be just interested in hearing you say a little bit about why maybe it's okay to wait, you know, for some of that other more complex stuff until kindergarten and first grade. We don't really have to fill out the application for college, you know, in kindergarten. So, I mean, just tell us a little bit about how you approach that aspect.
Absolutely. I think sometimes, as families, we go to the tangible. It's so great when you're like, "Oh, you saw that's an A!" Like, that's so great! But then they're like, "Whack!", you know, with their brother or sister, you know? And what happens is, is when you look at executive functioning, if any of you studied executive functioning in their early childhood years, executive functioning is teaching them the skills that they need to acquire in order to kind of learn how to learn. That the ABCs and the 1-2-3s and all of those quadratic equations, they will come. But they come so much more regularly and readily as children have those soft skills in tandem. Because what happens is, is when we really push hard on the academic pieces, but we forget some of those soft pieces, they really can create some issues. And one of the things, we have a behavioral intervention team through Smart Beginnings Virginia Peninsula, and we've found that children, childcare providers, when we go out and work with them, they are just begging for us to provide them information on these social-emotional skills, because children can do some of the academic pieces, but it's really those other skills that prove to be of such value. And you think about, we need that here even to work on a board. We have to be able to get along, we have to be able to problem-solve, and those are the important things that see us through in our futures.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead, Mr. Ashby.
Well, the brochure is, can it be distributed to churches and civic organizations?
You can give them to anybody.
Okay. So I just think it would be an excellent idea, and I've just got some ideas in my head in reference to that, and just hats off to you, your presentation. And one of the things that you were sharing, your reference to looking at this, when you look at this and when you look at it in early childhood classrooms, research is now beginning to say and share with us that some of our upper elementary, middle, high school classroom instruction situations actually need to look like a pre-K class, because all the things that you describe are life skills and skills on which you're going to need once they graduate from high school and further going into college. So I think that's a very, very important point. And then when you were talking about such as math skills and literacy skills and things like that, I want to try to quote, and the quote said, "The mind is like Jello. You have to put the good stuff in before it sets." And that's what early childhood and early intervention is really, really all about, as was displayed in the wonderful presentation that all of you done. But I've learned something from you guys this evening, but just the amount of learning that happens between birth and five years of age, while society really needs to understand that and really needs to begin to value that and needs to really begin to invest in that, you know?
Can I make a point to that as well? It is incredibly important that we provide children the intervention services they need as early as possible. If a family can get their hands on this simple tool and realize, you know what, things aren't, you know, I might need to reach out and have that conversation, that's a win. Because we just had a presentation about special education, that gives that child such a greater opportunity in the long run to be successful in the school-age years. This is incredibly important, and I do hope we can partner more. And so far, Mr. Nichols and I have been working diligently together to partner as we've been trying to inform our work. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to move the agenda. Items for 5.04, membership reports, the attendance reports, construction reports are all part of your package. There's no question on that. We'll move on to the comments for our acting superintendent, Mr. Nichols.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Donner. We have some great news to share and celebrate tonight. Newport News Public Schools, English as a Second Language Program, so our ESL program is a grand prize winner in the National School Board Association's 2018 Magna Awards. So, and it is the school board you see before you that has advocated for and really pushed for increasing ESL programs for our students, and this year's budget alone, we're adding seven ESL positions. This year's Magna Program highlights equity in education and recognizes school districts that remove barriers to achievements. Newport News is one of three grand prize winners in the entire country. We're also the winner of the Large School Division, oh, Division, Division? So it would be Large School Division, Division, at 20,000-plus. So we are the winner, which will be highlighted at their annual conference. I don't typically have props, but I have one today. Our program is highlighted in the April issue of the American School Board Journal, so you can read, we are the cover story. The School Division will also be honored at the National School Boards Association Annual Conference in San Antonio, so huge award, first of its kind in Newport News. Big things happen. This was also a busy weekend for our students, families, and staff. We hosted our very first family forum and resource fair at the Greater Hampton Roads Boys and Girls Club on Hampton Avenue. It was very well-attended. We had over 250 family members present for the event, which included lunch, information booths, activities, entertainment, and a Q&amp;A discussion with me. We got to talk about the hopes and dreams for their kids and their community. It really was a beautiful event. There were free groceries, clothing, school supplies were given away, lots of our community partners, we couldn't have done it without them. And it's also a perfect opportunity at our next forum scheduled for April 21st to bring this kindergarten readiness thing and have Smart Beginnings there as a partner. Actually, Smart Beginnings was there as a partner to really roll this out. I also had the opportunity, in less of a grand prize fashion, to join my central office colleagues in a friendly game of kickball on Saturday. Our student-wide SEA, our citywide SEA sponsored the Kickin' It to Violence Kickball Tournament in recognition of National Violence Prevention Week. So each high school had a staff team, each high school had a student team, and we had a central office team. We were out in the first round, so it was a very brief experience for the central office team, but it was for a good cause. We are now training, recruiting, and hiring for next season's tournament. One student team and one staff team from each high school took on the challenge. Congratulations to Woodside Students. They beat the Menchfield Staff in the finals. The Student Advisory Group on Education, that's SAGE, which Sophia leads for us, is hosting a high school expo at Patrick Henry Mall on Saturday, April 14th, from 11:30 to 2:30. So not that you need another reason to come to the mall, but our kids will be showing off all the cool things happening in Newport News. Each high school's represented, some of our high school programs will be sharing and showing how we are college, career, and citizen-ready. Nobody shows that like our kids. It'll also feature student performance in the food court and an art exhibit. I'd like to invite everybody on April 14th to be a part of that. Not that I need to remind everyone, and certainly not the Hilton teachers in the audience, but spring break is coming. April 2nd through 6th is spring break. I just thought I would let you know. All schools and offices will be closed. I wish everyone a hap- happy and safe spring break, and look forward to coming back and closing out this school year strong. Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, this is time, again, in our audience to receive comments from our audience, and we do have cards at this time. And so, as you hear your name, please come forward, Ms. Angela Harris.
Good evening, everyone. As always, it's a pleasure to come before this wonderful city council that governs our children. My name is Angela Harris. I'm born and raised in the city of Newport News. Right now, I'm 45 years old. We have a lot of things to celebrate too, under the leadership of Dr. Keogur, of course, 17 years ago. My girl, right here at Huntington Middle School, we had a lot of things that we had to address with our children, and that one main thing was stopping that pipeline, the prison. We have, in the city of Newport News right now, and in the state of Virginia, an executive order that we're waiting for our governor to sign, and everyone that has been engaged and involved in any activities in the last 17 years, as we stop that pipeline, the prison will receive a signed copy of that executive order. And I want to tell everyone here, congratulations, that's here, that was a part of it, but I'm here tonight with my elders, standing in solidarity with Huntington, the alumni, as well as those concerned citizens. We have a problem. There is no way that that school should even be in the condition that it's in now. Where is the neglect and the accountability from the adults? It's a shame, every time that we have to do something for our children in the southeast community, that we have to fight over it, tear each other down, talk about each other, break ourselves apart because of that 1958 merger didn't work for nobody but Demi. It's a shame right now. It's a shame when my elders are being attacked at this age they are now, after they worked hard, put up everything, come from Marbury Island all the way down to this water, all our land has been taken. There is no history of no Black, not even Swan Town, that Arthur Keyes stood in solidarity with every teacher that ever taught in the city of Newport News. He also stood solid with that Newsome House. There is no way that we should even be asking, fighting, and vaging for that Newsome House to be open seven days a week. It's a setup. I'm 45 years old, and we ain't going for it. You talk about integration. Integration only worked for those that it worked for. It took my livelihood, my life, it made my elders fight, it made Chuck Allen fight until the end, and I have his documentary for this generation. I watched as Chuck Allen got on his knees and apologized to Linwood DeBru, because they finally realized at 70 that they haven't played against each other. This makes no sense. I'm 45. My mother's name is Mary Williams. Her mother's name is, was Rosetta Hill. Her mother's name was Mary Thomas. Her mother's name was Rosie Gray, and her mother's name was Mary Bryant. I'm seventh generation. My daughter is the eighth, and he is the ninth. It makes no sense that we got to qualify to be poor to get any of our inheritance. We need to stop playing. It makes no sense. We need to come together. Every last one of y'all up here are new to me. I ran for school board as a write-in candidate. My elders wrote me in in 2002, and we're still arguing over the same foolishness that we were arguing over when we started. My children are grown now. Makes no sense. No jobs, no resources, no stability. Makes no sense. John Ely, you started right here like this baby when I started 17 years ago. In fact, we rode on the same car with Andrew Shannon. Makes no sense. Makes no sense. It makes no sense that we look at each other, go to the same churches, and we pray together and won't stand together. Makes no sense. Makes no sense that we got 230-some churches from Mercury Boulevard to that water, and this place should be packed with all those holy saints. Makes no sense. It makes no sense that we have an email downtown and we praying, and they should be here too. Makes no sense. It's election time. And if you don't see the people that's running for office, they ain't for you. Makes no sense. Everything that's in my power and my will, as I serve you on this Governor Advisory Council. I'm going to leave this with you. I need my paper back. I want you to use every piece of this to make sure that this child right here, that's going to speak after me. I want you to make sure that we use everything we have to make sure that we stop this foolishness in the southeast community and stop playing our children against each other. I want accountability out of all the adults. I want y'all to stop talking about these children like they don't exist. We look bad out here, y'all, and I mean that from my heart. I shouldn't have to come here. I should be on my way to Richmond, to serve you on your Governor Advisory Council. I am your representative for the tidewater area. There will be no fighting with the peninsula in the south side. We are one, we will be one, and accountability is what we will have from this one.
Thank you. Mr. Nasir Harris?
Hello, my name is Nasir Quay Harris. I'm the youth leader for the Southeast Care Coalition. I'm a sixth grader, accredited middle school, and one of the Black historical high schools that is now a middle school in Newport News. I am the great-grandson of Mary White and Leroy Quay, and the great-grandson of Mary Harrison, James Richardson Jr. All families has ties to Newport News before the 1958 merger. Our families have worked in the schools as well as attended. Please take the time to look at the Green School Initiative. As we prepare to make our voices heard with our elders to learn and preserve my ancestors and elder history for me as well as my offspring's to come, thanks for the opportunity to make my voice be heard. My name is Nasir.
Thank you, Nasir, for coming up and speaking so eloquently to us. And I will, again, thank your mom for bringing you here.
Grandma.
Grandma, your grandma, your grandmother.
Wow, too. I'm a roast.
For being here tonight. So at this time, we're going to continue on. Is there any more cards?
No, I have no more cards.
If no more cards, we will then move on to the matters of the school board. And so, Ms. Ramirez, will you start with us?
Sure. All right, so I want to start out by kind of, it seems like a long time ago now, but addressing the raise that we just luckily got approved by the school board. The 4% raise, to me, is a marker of everyone sitting here, your success. Because last year, we were asking for a 3% raise, and we got shot down by city council almost, almost, it just seemed like a very casual thing to me. And then this year, I kind of thought, oh, well, you know, that momentum's going to be gone. Clearly, I was wrong. We should open stronger numbers. The school board heard you, you said, "We're not going to ask for a 2% raise. We're not even going to ask for a 3% raise. This year, we're going to ask for a 4% raise." You know, "We're going to make them compromise with us." And I think that that demonstration of our unwillingness to back down is really what got us to this point, and is what is making Newport News Public Schools more competitive. So congratulations to everyone that came out. I think we saw a step forward today, and thank you very much. I appreciate it, on behalf of the students who are, you know, being taught by these teachers. I would also like to congratulate our special ed program on that statistic that we heard earlier, one-third, in the one-third highest in the state in terms of graduation rate, even with advanced studies diplomas. I can tell you, advanced studies diplomas are not easy, so that is just truly very impressive. I am also glad to hear about the added ESL positions and the awards that our ESL program got. I think that that is a huge step forward and something that is very important for all schools to address. Something that I've heard voiced by students repeatedly is that they want to see more of an emphasis on this. And so I'm really glad to see that Newport News is delivering in regards to that. Then, kind of going more towards the student side of things, just to let you guys know, as many of you are probably aware, if you know any seniors, it's college acceptance season. So that means that seniors right now are dealing with juggling, not only figuring out if they got into all their schools, but also figuring out what to do with their lives, and then answering all the questions where people are like, "Oh, what are you going to do with your life?" It's a lot, it's stressful. But I just want to offer my sincere congratulations to everyone who got into their schools, and I would also like to say, good luck over the next few days. For those of you who don't know, all the decisions will be out pretty much by April 1st, so congratulations to all of our seniors who are going to bigger and better things, and good luck over the next few days. Hope that you get into all your schools, in case you're watching. And then lastly, okay, I have two more things, sorry. I know my comments are usually a little shorter than this, but there was a lot that happened today, so. I would also like to build on what Mr. Nichols said about the SAGE Expo. It's something that I've been a part of for the past three years. It's an amazing opportunity. Students go all out. We have the arts being shown off, we have various clubs of each school being shown off. If you go, you will be able to see the best things that every school has to offer, some of the best programs. We ask our SAGE students to bring forth some of the programs that they're most proud of, or that they think makes their school stand out most. So it's just a really cool idea. You can interact with students, I promise, we're not scary. They want to talk to you, they want to answer your questions, they want you to see where your tax dollars are going. It's really a really cool experience. It's in the center of Patrick Henry Mall and at the food court, so I highly recommend that you just drop by. I'll be there, so we can chat. And that will be April 15th at 11:30 a.m. And then, last but not least, I would also like to point out that my position, applications are open right now, so if you know any seniors, or, I'm sorry, not seniors, any juniors or even sophomores who would like to apply for the position, the time is now, just ask them to stop by their office and pick up an application. stop by their office and pick up an application, an application, and then we will vote for the next student representative at the next Sage meeting. So get your applications in now. It's truly an amazing experience, and I would encourage every student who's interested to go out for it. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. for here. Mr. Stodgill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To those who've been out to many meetings and worked over the years to voice their desire for Huntington Middle School to continue, we agree, and I agree, and I think we're at a moment, at this point, where we need to see action. This board has been working for years on this. This board is not gonna stop working towards that goal. The early years were part of planning and setting an agenda, and now we're, I think, in the vocal phase. And when you're, you're gonna have to continue, we're gonna have to continue, the campaign to make the voices heard so that the project happens. And that's how it works. So we simply move on to another phase, but I believe it will happen. And I think the voice that the community has continued to give towards this is the assurance that it will happen. And I will be very pleased to see it when it does happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stodgill. Mr. Brown?
Alright. Well, tonight is, for me, just a momentous occasion, and I look back and think about all the things that we've accomplished and how we have persevered so much. And change is always difficult and hard, and we can reflect tonight on the victories that we do have. There is always another tomorrow and always another day that we're gonna have to continue to battle, continue to fight. But I'm so encouraged, number one, that it was a risk to state a number, put it out there, and then hope that the community would, would come and support. And, and you did. And I'm strengthened so much by your resolve and your perseverance, and I wanna thank you for supporting the board, and I wanna thank the board for supporting the direction of making us competitive. It has so much to do with our success and with driving towards where we wanna be as a board and in our future. And so I wanna thank everyone, I feel just so very grateful, and the battle is not over. The folks who are here tonight, you're the hardcore, alright? Remember that it's going to continue to take hardcore support to get it through, it's not funded yet, alright? It's requested, but it's, it's not fully funded, not until, not until the council decides to give the funding. So this can't end here. Things never, it never ends. That's how greatness happens. Greatness is something that you do on a consistent basis every day, and that's what I was taught by athletics, it taught me that when I was a young person. I recall, because it was part of my, my daily life, my existence. I would run or ride my bike several miles to the track, I would hop the fence because the, the school would be closed, and I would, and I was, I was a run-and-full. I ran, I ran all the time because I was training, and I was always doing a training program because although I wasn't the most talented athlete, I wanted to, I had a dream of making it to the state finals. And that was, that was a dream that I had as a, as a young person. I trained for many years, and I trained so much that, hopped that fence so many times, the coach finally gave me a key. He said, "You're here, you're here all the time, and I know that you, you come every Saturday, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a key to the shed, you can bring the hurdles out, and you can, you can practice on your own." And that is what my coach instilled in me. He encouraged me. He didn't chastise me for, for hopping the fence and being at the school when I wasn't, you know, necessarily supposed to be. He encouraged me and nurtured me, and this was, this was a man who himself worked at the canning plant, he worked twelve hours a day, and he volunteered his own time to come out and, and coach kids and be a, be a light and be a guidance. And Coach White, I see you as that kind of person. I see that you never gave up on, on kids. So because Coach White could never give up on a kid, I could never give up on Coach White. He came, we talked about this middle school wrestling for many years now, multiple years, and I know it was, just like with the, the staff raises, it was dark, alright? There was a time when it was dark, but we persevered. And so what my coach taught me, I, I knew that you would persevere with us, and you did, and so tonight, I'm so very thankful and proud, these are, like I said, this is a momentous night, we've got middle school wrestling, which is huge for youth development, that's huge for our dropout rate, for our graduation rate. We know this directly correlated, directly tied to, to the success of kids, and we know that these things are gonna, these things make a big difference. And these are things that are worth fighting for, and I'm just so very thankful that we are in a community where we can get these kinds of things done. We are magna award winners, first time in the history of the, of the school division. I know we've been grand prize finalists before for our Spark Program, so this is nothing new to us to be winners, but we have won the whole thing this time. We won the whole thing. So, you know, when people, when you walk around and you, and you're in this city and people talk about the schools, best school division in the country. We proved it. That's, that's what, that's what the award, that's what it says, that's what the award means. There are ninety thousand-plus school divisions in the entire country, we beat 'em all. Okay? Beat every single one of them. And that's, that's what that means, alright? Two-point-three percent dropout rate? Tell me anybody who's got, who's got numbers like that. Ninety-three-point-four percent on-time graduation rate, and I just reflect on how much we've accomplished, so much in the last four years, and how proud I am to be associated with this board and what we've done, and I know I'm going, I'm going on, but, you know, we came in, we, we will have nearly doubled the number of fully accredited schools in the last four years. We're already at twenty-one, and by projections, we'll probably more than double the number of fully accredited schools in this division. So, you know, when you hear the naysayers, they, they are just, keep, keep pressing forward. Teachers and staff, you are just doing a phenomenal, a tremendous job, and it would be, it would be beneath me to not fight for you as much as you fight for our kids. You're just doing a phenomenal job. For us to, for us to get the kind of results that we're getting and have the performance that we have, which is just second to none, second to none. And I, and I know that we're on a pathway to be talked about as the best school division in the country, because we're already proving it, and it just, just takes a while, a little while before the coach gives you the key, right? Coach says, "Okay, he's not gonna stop coming." People see, people gonna realize, "Okay, Newport News is not gonna stop being great." Okay, we might as well call 'em then.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Simons?
I just want to apologize for being late. I am the chair of New Horizons Regional Technical Center Board, and once a year, the meetings always coincide. And tonight, we had a tour of the new Woodside, New Horizons facility, and it is really looking good. We have a new Cisco networking, cyber, security lab that Newport News high school students can apply to get their Cisco networking certification in this program. We also renovated the pharmacy tech lab there, and that looks great, too. A lot of students are using pharmacy tech as a certification that will help them pay their way through college. So really neat things happening up at New Horizons Woodside Lane. I also enjoyed very much this weekend attending the Peninsula Fine Arts Center Artistic Verses performance. We had poetry readings from high school students from all over Newport News. They did a wonderful job reading their own poems, their families came out, and their teachers were there. Their teachers were there on Saturday to support their students. And really, tonight, I think we're, we're backing new teachers, we're celebrating the teachers that we have in Newport News. I have a special heart for teachers because my first really great work experience in my life was at Hilton Elementary School. So I, I found a family at Hilton among the teachers, and I am still on the teacher team, so I'm so glad to, to see the teachers here. And I'm also really thankful to have the Huntington alumni here with us this evening. They are loyal and reminding us every single time about Huntington, and, you know, I want everyone to know that I am a hundred percent behind rebuilding and dreaming big for Huntington. I mean, when you, when Douglas was talking about the, the field, I imagined a beautiful track, a beautiful track that everybody in the community can access to get their exercise and, and have a, a safe space for recreation, and, and I, I can just see really wonderful things happening down at Huntington. So I hope everyone has a wonderful, restful spring break. I am wishing really good, long sleep-ins for all of our teachers, and some good books to be read, and some R and R, and thank you, everyone who came out tonight.
Mr. Ely?
I'd like to thank everybody who came out to the Stop the Violence Basketball Game. We had a Heritage this weekend, we had over two thousand people in attendance. That was really good. We partnered with our local high schools, Demby High School, Heritage, Hampton High School, and Balfour High School. And I'd also like to give a special thank to the Ten Sixty-Seven Foundation, who partnered with me to make that Celebrity Stop the Violence Basketball Game a huge success. I'm also really, really excited and wanna thank Douglas for that four percent raise that he pushed, and we definitely gonna do it for our teachers. Our teachers work hard, not just our teachers, our, the whole staff of Newport News Schools has to work hard night and day. They're there before school, they're there after school, they're there before even the school opened, so we want, we, they're definitely in desire and need of that four percent raise, and I hope the city council will support us, support this board, or giving our teachers what they most definitely deserve. Huntington Middle School is something very dear to my heart. I live a couple of blocks from Huntington Middle School. I definitely understand the concerns of needing a new middle school in our community. Matter of fact, I walk there twice a week to walk on the track. We deserve a new middle school. We do deserve a new track, and we will get what we deserve as our community. We're gonna continue to fight, we're gonna continue to fight for what's right, and like Ms. Basemore said, go in there and tell 'em what we need. The back-and-forth action is not deserving of our children. And our children will have what they need. They will have a new middle school, and we'll continue to thrive as a community and continue to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for coming out tonight, especially the teachers from Hilton, the alumni, and staff. I get a lot of telephone calls about a lot of positive things in the school district, which is great, and I also get a lot of phone calls about things that we need to show up. You know, in order to be successful, you also have to strengthen your weaknesses, and that's just a fact of life, okay? Not just for teacher pay raises, but also we need to continue to support our teachers in staff development and continuation training for teachers, which is, I think is very important. So this is something that the board has been talking about, and I could clearly say it's something the board has heard lately about staff development. So we just wanna continue to put emphasis on that, and give our teachers what I, what they need. I believe where the rubber meets the road is our teachers. I applaud you. It is tough work. My grandmother used to say that, you know, it's a profession, and that you are caring people. So, you know, it is tough work, and we need to make sure that we are supporting our teachers in every way. So I will continue to push that support with my colleagues, sometimes vocal, sometimes not, but I will ensure that that happens. Huntington, you know, at the end of the day, we must be able to speak truth to power. We must not waver on what we think is best for our kids, and we must be consistent on it. Power only yields to power, and that's just the way it goes. You have to be consistent in your message, and Huntington has been consistent in their message. I just ask that if you can get, you know, parents to, to help with this movement, I think it would be valuable, okay? So I understand the significance of provenance in neighborhoods and things of this nature, and that's why I speak so passionately about it. And, and I wasn't born in Newport News, Virginia, I was born in Hollis Springs, Mississippi, but I still understand when it's time to stand for something, you have to do it, so regardless of which form it takes. So I just wanna let you know that I support you a hundred percent, support these teachers a hundred percent, and if I could write checks for all of y'all, I would do it, but I can't. My young daughter may not like that, she's in college, so, you know. But, no, seriously though, I just, we asked a lot of our teachers. I walked through Ward today with, with the principal, and with one of the preachers in the neighborhood, and he discussed these securities concerns. And, and being an individual that, you know, has been in three combat zones, the bottom line is you have to have security. You can't wait till an incident happened and say, "Wait, I wish we had did something." We need to fund extra guards there. He is short in that school, and I can see how something can happen easily. It is open and accessible to the public, but the good thing about it, he has said that the kids have been doing their job, which means they have six minutes when the bell rings to get from one class to the next, regardless of whether it's upstairs or another building. And so he said he has minimum issue with the kids doing what they're doing, so, which is a great thing, but we still need to plan for incidents. There is a building that sits beside the school, I think it's a community center, that is owned by the city, so I don't know if we ever looked into, you know, possibly acquiring that, because it actually sits, you know, right there where kids have to walk by and civilians go inside of the gym, you know, at any given time, okay? So I think that's one of those things we need to look at, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Ashby?
Good evening. My comments will be brief, because I know it's getting late, but I do wanna just give some shout-outs, a thank. First, to the wonderful Smart Beginnings presentation, we thank you so very much, and stressing, emphasizing the essentiality of early education and early intervention. Just really appreciate the comments, the facts that you gave, which were really very, very powerful, and we just simply hope and pray that it resonated in the community, because early education is just key or critical in our situation and setting. Next, our Huntington alumni, we've heard the concept of reference to back and forth. I love what James Brown had did at Cayman Presents last time, and he presented facts of how the school system has consistently submitted in the capital improvement budget funding for Huntington. We, it has been going on since two thousand and ten. So I'm understanding when Effie Ash was on the board, she was asking for funding for, for Huntington Middle School. There is no doubt that this school system or this school board, their, the vision is to build a Huntington Middle School. So I'm sorry there's, you know, things going back and forth, but the fact is, we wanna build a Huntington Middle School. The southeast community needs it. Our children need it in that situation and setting. So I just really wanted to make sure that that concept is really understood fully. I received a call today and had a long conversation with Ms. Taylor, and as we discussed that, she is understanding and really receiving what the school system has done. I said it last month, and I will say it again, I will not let the thing be shared out there that the previous superintendent was not proactive in this situation. There was a whole plan of reference to the Snuggly Stem Academy, then Huntington Alumni, and then Warwick High School. That's, that's the facts. The study was done, so that, those are the facts, and that, that's what occurred in that situation or, or setting. To our educators, we do thank you so very much, and we know that teaching is really not a profession. Teaching is really a calling, but even though it's a calling, teachers should be and must be compensated for the work in which they do. You just heard earlier about what the graduation rate is, what the dropout rate is, what's happening in special education. All that is the result of dedication, devotion, that is consistently and constantly demonstrated and displayed by our teachers, by our instructional staff. And I always say, even last year when we were seeking funding for support staff, it's pretty much like a puzzle. What bus drivers do, what custodians do, what cafeteria workers do, what our teachers do, what administrators do. If every piece is not in place, success cannot happen. It just cannot happen, and it is beginning to happen, or it's happening because of what has, what has taken place in that situation or, or setting there. Teachers have the ability to look at the, the insight of children as opposed to the eyesight, and that is why numbers and things are happening, and I'm not a numbers person, but I will go- but I will go ahead and say that look at the graduation rate of what it is. Teachers don't look at the eyesight, they look at the insight. Teachers don't look at the difficulty in the child, they look at determination. They don't look at, at a child's mishap, they look at what's the miracle in the child. They don't look at the obstacle in the child, they look at the opportunity that's in the child. What Newport News Public Schools instructional staff has done is, they've actually decreased their eyesight in working with children and focused on the insight and brought out the best in children. That's what they've done and they should be and must be compensated for going ahead and doing that and displaying that. So again, we just thank you so very much for what you do each and every single day. As somebody who's taught kindergarten for 40 years, I know what you do. I know what you do. And the thank you does not come from the school board, it, the thank you does not come from the staff. You know where the thank you really comes from? The children, the children's lives that you teach, touch, mentor, encourage and inspire every single day. That's where the real is, big thank you. So on behalf of the children of Newport News Public Schools, we thank our educators for what they do each and every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. Again, that Magna Award, we're the number one school in the country, absolutely in the country. We're getting a Magna Award, which is outstanding. I know we still have the newspaper here today, so I'm hoping that will make a top poll into our local newspaper, that we are the number one in the country. And that's not in fighting or killing, that's actually in advancing our students. Likewise, when it goes back to my vice chair, someone told me, I heard the other day, students don't care what you know, they want to know if you really care. And this is what we, this whole movement. So, you know, in this time, almost four years ago, I decided to run for school board. And at that time, I made a promise that every decision that I made would be funded through this process, that what's best for the improvement and advancement of knowledge for our students, our teachers, our staff personnel and our administration. And that said, that comes to someone must have values. And so today, I'm going to leave you with two words about my character and my values. One is integrity. One is integrity. Uncompromising, inherent to moral and ethical principles. Also it says soundness of moral character, of character. Honesty. Honesty, fairness and straightforwardness of conduct. This is what, this is what folks voted for us to be. Integrity, honesty in everything that we do. So this evening, we voted on two deals, one for the fiscal operating budget, 7-0, and then we had another vote for rezoning of Huntington 6 to 1. And so we need to do this and we need to be honest with ourselves when it comes to improving and moving forward and whatever, we have to be accountable. Absolutely, we have to be accountable. Every year, you know, we tell students, "Get up, get dressed, get to school, get to studying and by all means obey the rules and regulations set forth in the student handbook." Well, otherwise, you may, there may be some unwanted circumstances like punishment and things of that sort. And parents that are watching like you, the first thing you go back and look at what policy that was approved, the procedures that were approved by us. So I want us, us board members to also understand, when we make rules and when we make policy and when we approve things, that we must stand by them. We must do what we say, even though sometimes we don't read, you don't vote if you don't read. It's imperative, as we move this school system forward, that we also be accountable. We must be accountable. You, the public and the teachers and the students must hold us accountable. When we vote, we vote for the betterment and for the improvement of our students and our teachers, bus drivers, professional school counselors and those here in administration building. And sometimes we have to make hard and very hard decisions, but I'm one to tell you, never, you're going to never question my character, my integrity or my honesty, especially when we voted upon it. I'll leave you with that tonight. If you have anything else, I adjourn the meeting.